Give another 30 seconds.
All right, we'll get started. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting out of order of the December 4th Patent Township Planning Commission. Does anyone have anything to add to the posted meeting agenda? Okay. Next, we'll move to approve the minutes from the November 6th meeting. Can I have a motion on the minutes from the November 6th meeting? And does anyone have anything to add it prior to making a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. All those in favor to approve the minutes from the November 6th meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No. Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Did you vote against the minute?
That's okay. Hey, that's okay.
I already said aye.
Okay. We will now move to public comment. Just a reminder, please come to the mic and please limit your comments to five minutes. And does anyone from the audience have anything to say on anything that is not on tonight's meeting agenda? If you have something to comment on that is on tonight's meeting agenda, please wait until we get to that item. Is there anyone on Zoom that has any public comments?
There's no one on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Well, then that solves that. Hearing none. We will go to item four, which is the Toftrees West Plant Community subdivision and replot plan for tax parcels 1841A and 18-223. Penterra Engineering has submitted a subdivision replot plan for the tax parcels aforementioned, which are located in the Toftrees Plant Community. One of the newly created lots is to be developed into a single-family dwelling subdivision per a concurrently submitted subdivision plan. The purpose of the plan is to divide two tax parcels, and there's a table in the posted agenda provided for reference. So I'll turn it over to Ken and anyone that would like to speak from the developer on this item.
Okay, I believe Tony Frackl is here representing the developer on this. So if Tony wants to go through briefly, give us an overview and accept any questions.
Sure.
Sure. As Ken said, my name is Tony Frackl. I'm with Penterra Engineering. We're the civil engineer for Patent Development LLC, S&amp;A Homes. They're the developers of the property that will actually be discussed in the next plan. This is sort of the precursor to that. But as you can see, this is, this is the Toftrees, what's known as the Toftrees West. I think you'd seen the master plan. We'd been in to talk a couple of things. It's this kind of whole big area over here. This is Waddle Road here, Toftrees Avenue. Right up in this area here is what's known as Masters Boulevard. That's the road that was approved as part of the Mount Nittany Medical Center. We're working with PennDOT right now to review plans, anticipate that going to construction in the spring of next year. So the next step of development there would be this piece of ground right here. And this replot plan essentially takes a tax parcel that's, there's a roughly line that goes right through here, takes this piece and this piece and puts them together, creates a 16-acre piece of ground. It also creates a right-of-way that comes off of this piece right here. Those are also all part of the master, that master plan that I mentioned that you've seen. They're all in conjunction with that, and it'll be used for a 52-lot, single-family subdivision. Again, that's the next plan that we're going to consider here. We did this in two parts because these two pieces of ground right now, those owners have a development agreement with S&amp;A to then develop this. So essentially what's happening is we're doing the replot, deed will be created for this piece of ground. It will be conveyed for development to the development group. So I'm going to stop. Yeah, yes.
I just, the question I had, when I first looked at it, was the reason for the subdivision is because there are two different owners? Is that what you said, or?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Ken, do we have the, do we have the subdivision plan?
Yep. I mean, if...
Yes, right?
Yeah, yeah. And if, if folks want, I mean, if you want Tony to lead right into it, this is the, actually the next item on the agenda. You can either do one of two things. You can have him go through everything, review it all at once. Then you can vote on the pair of them if you want to, or you can break them apart and vote on each item, whichever you choose.
Just a quick point of order question. I noticed that Ferguson Township had caught the acreage.
Yes.
Yeah.
I was going to actually ask Tony that question. Did you resolve the acreage issue?
Yes. We actually have, the attorneys actually created a new deed to match up the subdivision plan that we did when we did the Mount Nittany parcel. That will be recorded, I'm going to say, in the next two weeks. And that will resolve what Ferguson Township had mentioned.
And the other note on, from the Alder Nun, Alder Run Engineering on the wetlands and the floodplain and the endangered and threatened species in light of the bats in March of '23, where does that stand?
Oh, yeah. Were we going to talk about an updated delineation for the wetlands?
We certainly can.
Okay. That was in Michelle's letter.
Okay.
The engineering comment. So that's a conversation we should probably have before this is finally signed off by the township.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can do that.
So, well, we can discuss that. But that can be, because that's in her letter. So that can be a condition of your approval, and then it can be taken care of at a staff level with Tony.
Okay. So the one is the wetlands presence. The second is the 100-year flood plan. And the third is the endangered species updated as of March '23 with the bat species, right?
Yep. Yeah, and that's just adding your PNDI receipt to the plan.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Are we okay if we review item five and then vote on them separately and go back over? Is that, okay. So I will now move that we will table any voting on item four, which is the subdivision of 1841A and 18223. And I will move that we discuss without voting on item four on the West Plant Community and Toftrees Phase R for single-family development and preliminary final subdivision plan. Okay. All those in favor of pulling off on four and moving to five to combine, say aye. Aye? Okay. Opposed, say no. Okay, Tony. Please go ahead and you can go over item five on the agenda. Thanks.
Thank you.
And Tony, I'm the worst, so just tell me what page you might be on.
No, this is good. Actually, I think you had it. Do you want to shrink it down a little bit?
Okay. A bit more?
Yeah, maybe even more. There we go. Perfect. Yeah, this is good. Thanks, Amy. So the plan that we just talked about, ends up creating this lot right here, 16.7 acres. It's bounded by the proposed Masters Boulevard that I spoke about that will be in construction in the spring. This is a right-of-way, known as Augusta Way. This will create a road that actually ends up wrapping around the back of the development. The rear of the property, this is the Belfont Central Rail Trail that comes through here. The gray area you see is actually an easement that has been granted by the owners to the township for use and maintenance of that trail. And this property line here actually borders, what's out there now is the cart path and the maintenance road for the golf course. There is a maintenance shed and a house on the property right now for the golf course. Those will be removed for the, for the development. Let me jump forward. Yeah, you go to the next one. So this is, this is the proposed subdivision. As you can see, there'll be access points off of Masters Boulevard here and off of the future Augusta Way right here. These two roads will be developed to township standards as far as width, curving, drainage, sidewalks, street trees, slope, everything Ken requires us to do, of course. Cul-de-sac at the end here, large enough for, you know, vehicles, maintenance vehicles, snow plowing, trash recycling to get through. The lots are all to township standard as far as size, width, depth. The Toftrees Master Plan requires this area to have a density of two to five units per acre. This 52 units works out to 2.63, so we're kind of right in the, right in the middle there as far as density. Utilities will come off of Masters Boulevard. There is a water line that comes up this side of Masters Boulevard. There's a sewer line that comes up the middle. Those are actually both in the ground at this point. There will be a gas line and a power line that come up this side. All of those will, of course, come in here to serve the site. With the exception of the sewer line, sewer line actually comes down and goes through here, kind of connects back in on the lower part there. I'm going to jump forward to the grading plan. Amy? Yeah, thank you. So...
Oh, gosh. See, I'm the worst. I'm the worst.
Okay, can we, just really quick on the, I see multiple, even on this one. What's the, going through lot 52 open space? Is that an easement right? Yeah, that, now right there.
That's, that, that's an easement for the sewer line.
Okay.
Yes, that's exactly what that is.
Okay.
Yes. So the stormwater management for the site, there will be inlets and pipes on all the public roads. There's a proposed basin right here that will collect the stormwater kind of from the, I'll call it the back half of the site, meaning this area here. The lower part of the site will be collected. It will be transmitted into a swale that goes down here. No, I got that wrong. There's a pipe that will come through here and actually ties in right here, ties into the three big basins that are out there now. Those basins were originally designed to handle a certain amount of stormwater from over here and kind of a large area behind the Mount Nittany site. They're really large. So part of it will be, part of it will be handled here, part of it will be handled down here. Those basins are part of a property owner's maintenance agreement, so they will be, there is kind of shared maintenance for those basins between the developers, Mount Nittany, and kind of future development out here. So, do you want to go to the next plan?
Is item three, is item three on the letter from Michelle, is that, is that correlated to what you just said, Tony, on the basins? There's a comment on the letter, item three, that says that the infiltration basin and all the averages, is that the one you're referencing?
Yes. That was, that was the proposed basin that you saw that was right up here. We'd done some infiltration testing out there. The geotechnical engineer was out there. And she just had a question on how we use the numbers that were there, how we applied a factor of safety to those numbers, and whether they were appropriate. So we've had a conversation with her. We're going to adjust what we have in our report. It will still work. We're confident it'll be fine. And I think she's okay with that. We understand that we'll have to get her a full, complete report to sign off on, but we're, we're confident that'll be fine. Yeah. So this is the next plan. You can sort of just, this just sort of shows you what the profile of the road will be. We've got a couple of low points in there, just to make sure that the runoff doesn't come screaming down the hill the whole way to the, to the bottom of the cul-de-sac. Just makes it easier for getting it out. It works better for the housing, too, instead of just having it kind of sloping the whole way down. Breaks it up a little bit as well. I think, I think that's all I have. There, oh, I would say this. The entrance road here does have a pull-off area with a mailbox kiosk for the mailboxes for residents to, kind of one central area there to, to get their mail. And at the end of the road here, which, which will tie in with a public, this is a public street right here, but from the end, it's not completed, down to the Belfont Central Rail Trail, there will be a gravel path. So anybody that's on these sidewalks, or anybody that comes up the main road, will be able to get to that existing path there. That was a request from the township. So I think with that, everything I have to relay at this time, and if you have any more questions, we're just asking for consideration of conditional approval based on what Amy said. We have, we have to provide a new PNDI. That's the report that the state gives us as far as the bats and when we're allowed to clear trees out here. And then the wetlands was just clarification, update on where the wetlands are. The floodplain was just, they just asked us to make it clear where we had it on the plan. It was difficult to see. So we're just going to clarify that. So...
Okay. What comments do we have from the planning commission on item four and/or item five? And then we'll go back and take a position on four, and then we'll take a position on five. So please speak up, and we can go down the line or whatever's best. Debbie?
I don't really have anything.
Okay. Bill?
I'm uncomfortable, but let's start with staff. Do you have any problems with that roadway?
No. I mean, right now, as written in the agenda, there are some minor technical issues and some things that need to be done before we will allow the plan to be signed and recorded. But all of those things are things that are normally taken care of at staff level. They're minor things, whether it be, you know, nomenclature or some things on the plan upside down, or something that they missed. So those are the little minor technical issues that really need to be cleaned up at this moment. The big picture items have all been addressed. So...
Okay. Where I am uncomfortable right now is the, still needing an updated PNDI and sort of not knowing, not having all the information on that. So that's kind of where I'm stuck. And my, my preference would be to wait until we actually have more tie-down on that, unless you can provide me more information.
I, I would say this. The PNDI that we can provide is not going to change the one that we, that we provide. You know, the one that we've been using, it will be the exact same. It will be updated. We understand that.
It's not likely to change. The wetlands delineation is also not likely to change. It just needs to be updated. We also have regulations about wetlands development. So if they come back and they, something has changed on the wetlands delineation, they're likely going to have to make major changes to the plan.
Yes.
So that will come back before you.
So we at least have...
So we have a stopgap in there. So I wouldn't say that's a reason to withhold up the plan.
I feel good. That answers that one. And then the last one is, I just would prefer to see the deeds properly recorded before...
That's a, it's been a common thing, not just here, right? It's been sort of everywhere in the county when you get these older pieces of land. And this is the process to catch it and get it cleaned up. So we'll get it taken care of.
Didn't we have one last one?
Yes. Yeah, we did.
I just started saying that we should say that. You guys need to have this done before we're approving things. That way there's no changes on that stuff. You don't have notice for 30 days for that.
The only comment I have is on the bicycle paths of the Belfont Central Rail Trail. It's kind of a minor request. Use smaller grade gravel than they did over in Patton Crossing?
Yes. Yes. That's fair, that's fair statement. And we did call for, we did call for the trail grade. There is like a trail grade grit, like specifically for that.
Trail surface aggregate. TSA.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we'll, we'll use that. Not going to say anything about Patton Crossing. Okay. Yes. Thank you. We'll take care of that.
Okay. Sure.
I don't have any questions or reservations.
I have one follow-up on the rail trail. And I don't know that it's necessarily your, I did see the gravel happen there. I was going to ask a question about that. But I guess we're still putting a lot, you know, we're, we're not, we're putting a lot more people here, but not giving them a lot of options in terms of walking and cycling. And that rail trail is a great way to get to campus without, you know, encountering traffic or danger to a person. The question is, what is being done about, you know, protecting people as they cross Toftrees? And where do we stand with that?
Yeah, that's something that's kind of a continuing discussion, and it's part of a plan that's not being shown tonight. That's Toftrees Resort as well, and Masters Boulevard and Waddle Road, and sort of how they all tie together, and looking at some safe passage for folks crossing Toftrees on the rail trail. And also, one of the things we're going to be doing next year, so hopefully we're going to be getting a shared-use path in front of Toftrees Resort, which will take a piece of Toftrees Avenue. But we're also engaging an engineer next year to look at connecting the rest of it, so that it goes, the shared-use path would go to Cricklewood and tie into the path we're planning on Cricklewood. Because Toftrees Avenue has a really high average daily traffic on it. And I was surprised when we were out there over the summer walking that road. It's not safe to be on that road. It's a high rate of speed. So we're looking at ways, because there are a lot of residents there, and there's going to be new people moving out there as well. So we're looking at ways to try to make that less bicycle and pedestrian aggressive and safer.
I guess we've, we've talked about it since I've been on this, and nothing has happened yet, especially the crossing area. So I guess I'd, if there is any kind of a timeframe or timeline or something that you all have in mind, it would be helpful. It makes me nervous that we keep putting people.
Right. And, yeah, like I said, we have money in the 2024 operating budget to get an engineer to come in and help us do the planning for the shared-use path, the pieces of it on Toftrees Avenue. We're hopeful that the owners of the resort will do the big piece of it in front of the resort, so that hopefully we can sort of tie this whole system together within the next couple of years. Certainly it takes time to plan, but then being able to move forward. We had the plan that Navarro did a couple of years ago, but there were some troubling pieces of that plan that we didn't like. So that's why we want to do the shared-use path, because we think that's probably something that's going to be necessary and will be well-used.
I just think it doesn't make sense from my perspective that the other end of Toftrees Avenue has more of those pieces in place, and now we're developing this end, and it's still back in 1970.
Yeah, and that's the problem. That is the absolute problem.
Even though the bridge got done, that other sector is still back in the 70s.
Yeah, the totality of that problem on Toftrees Avenue, and it happens everywhere in Pennsylvania, right? We didn't, back in the 1970s, we weren't planning for people to walk and bicycle on that road. We weren't planning for the amount of traffic on that road, right? And then the newer section of Toftrees was developed at a time when we're sensitive to those things. So trying to go back and retrofit and connect the dots...
Well, and I think, I mean, this is minor, and this is the last thing I'll say is, I think that the fact that you're putting like a Mount Nittany Health Building back there, and you're going to have emergency, possibly emergency vehicles coming in and out of there, in some capacity, even though they'll probably use the highway, you know, but there's going to be increased traffic regardless.
There's going to be increased traffic. And from what I understand, that is, is not necessarily a hospital, it's a clinic.
Right. Not a hospital, clinic.
Yeah.
Right. It's an outpatient building.
Yeah, and they had a traffic study done. And there's a new traffic signal that will be going in there as well. So...
And they would connect to 99, more so going through Fox Point.
Oh, I agree.
They'll, yeah, they'll connect more on Waddle Road.
I just meant more of that term.
Yep. Yeah, and there will be a traffic signal going in at Masters Boulevard and Waddle and Toftrees. There are some considerations we need. And again, it's not this plan, so we don't really want to talk too much about it. But helping people cross, helping golf carts cross safely, because there is a slope issue on Toftrees Avenue right now as well, especially right in that area. So looking at sort of all of our options to make that a little bit safer for the residents out there.
Right.
One, one other minor comment on your exit to Augusta?
Right here. Yes, sir.
Or what, Masters Boulevard, I guess, the one that comes from?
Yeah, can you jump back?
You were asking a lot, Tony.
Yeah, okay.
You are going to put crosswalks there for the people to get over to the shared path on the southern side of Masters Boulevard?
We could, I'm not sure that we had considered that, but we certainly...
It'd be good if you did.
Well, if you have sidewalks coming out.
That was one of the staff comments, was we want to see crosswalks at all of the locations, so that we can get people safely across all the intersections.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get, we'll get something added in there. Yeah.
So can we do a conditional approval?
Yes.
With the requirement of the addition of the side?
The crosswalks are in the staff comments.
Yeah, yeah, that's part of the staff comments.
Yep.
And, okay, so why don't we go back to four, to vote on four?
Yes.
And then, unless anyone else has comments, public comments, okay. And then we'll go to five, and then we can include the conditional things that we referenced as well.
So...
So do I have a motion on the floor for line item four, which is a Toftrees West Plant Community subdivision and replot plan for 1841A and 18223?
I will make the motion. I will make the motion for, for that we approve with staff conditions, the subdivision. I can speak this. The subdivision and replot plan for tax parcels 18004-001A and 18-022-003 with staff, with staff contingent.
And deed. Second?
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we will slowly turn the page without rushing and move into... I have that sign in my room. It says, "Discuss, don't rush," so.
I have a sign in my office that says, "Hold on a second. I got to overthink this."
Well, I tell my parents to not overthink the room. Okay, moving on to line item five. So we have, we now have the Toftrees West Plank Community Phase R six single-family development preliminary and final subdivision plan. I made a note about the crosswalks, which was also in the staff letter conditions. So do I have a motion on item five? And if anyone wants to put in any other conditions, please do so in the motion.
I was going to suggest that we consider, in this motion, that we have them place the, when they do the road, that they complete the rail trail via connection to the rail trail at the same time.
That's also part of a different plan. Yeah, the rail trail is connected up through here. This is not the missing link. The missing link is on the other side of Toftrees Avenue.
Well, I know.
And that's a coming attraction.
I just want to get, at least to make sure that we have the infrastructure now so that when that link is completed.
Yeah, we have this infrastructure now, correct, Tony?
Yeah, are we talking about this piece right?
Yeah, the rail trail.
That's a piece of this plan that they're going to do is to make that link up to the rail trail.
From this development to the, but I guess it's from this development across.
Down, yeah, across and down. And that's a, that's a, that's a coming attraction. That is all I will say, Tony.
Yeah, we have one little piece that we're missing, the actual ownership of an easement over. But they're not going to get away without us having it.
Yes. That's not on this plan.
Really can't?
Yes, Tony.
All right.
What have I said since I started?
All right.
Okay, so can I have a motion on item five on the West Plank Community R six single-family development preliminary and final subdivision plan?
I will make the motion contingent upon staff's comments and any other contingencies placed upon the developer files for by friendly limits. Does anybody have any friendly limits? Can I close it?
One second.
I have a second? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, the ayes have it.
Thank you, and we'll get all those things taken care of as quickly as possible.
I was surprised that there were no contingencies that they, that anybody wanted to add for you guys.
Wait, what's that?
I was surprised that nobody wanted to add any.
Oh.
Well, I think a lot of the things are in the staff letters and the write-ups.
We'll take care of it. We'll make sure that, we'll make sure that the path is, you know, it's defined pack gravel. It'll be...
And we'll get a report on any of the environmental things.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Make sure you get it.
Because there was a letter for line item five, too, that had 11 talking points on it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
I think we should have a planning commission day when we can go test it out. That's okay. We'll just have the meeting. Hey, I plan field trips. What's the difference? Okay, item six is status report on pending items. None. Other business, the board had actions on November 15. They approved the final subdivision plans of the K Stewart re-subdivision of lots seven R seven, one and two, and the reserve. And I assume all that deed stuff got worked out with those items?
They're in the middle of working that out, yes, yep.
Okay. And they approved the reserve preliminary subdivision plan as well. And that was the one, if I'm not mistaken, that was the five-year update.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the, that's the third time for that.
Yeah, I know. Okay, anyone have any comments on any of that? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Oh, Jim, sorry. Question, Patton Crossing, how's that doing?
Patton Crossing is...
They, you're going to see, coming up here very soon, they're going to block off one of the lanes going into town because they're going to be putting that sidewalk in place in front of the wall. So that's the latest update that did, is going to Sophie, who will put that out on social media and stuff for us to let folks know. But that area will be down to one lane of traffic, through traffic for a little while.
That's horrible when they do that.
But it's going to be much nicer whenever it's done.
Yep.
To follow up on that question, did we ever get the right-of-way repairs to the road ordinance?
No, we just actually got our codification sent back to us updated, so that'll be something we'll work on in 2024 with our engineer. We had some staff turnaround, turnover, so now that's something we'll work on in the new year. And if I could just give you one just quick update about CRPA, speaking of staff turnover. The new planning director, Michael Tilka, started a couple of weeks ago. He's coming in to meet with me tomorrow. I've actually talked with him twice now. He understands sort of our concerns with not having a planner, and we're using Ferguson, and Ferguson's losing their director of planning. So everyone's down planners right now. But he and I are going to have a chat tomorrow. He said he had a second interview set up last week with someone that he seemed to think was promising. He came from Colorado. He was in Iowa. He's originally from Green Tree out in Pittsburgh and became interested in planning because he was on the planning commission, went back and got his masters in planning, and that's how he became a planner. So he has a very interesting background. He did a lot of mentoring in Colorado with young planners. That's something that we've discussed, that maybe that's where the center region needs to go, right? With the planning program is, we have a pipeline out of Penn State. Maybe we approach and get the kids out of Penn State, and we become known as a place you want to go start your career because you get mentored and coached up. And then you go, yeah, they don't stay long, but they go elsewhere, and we get these young rock stars. So I'm encouraged to talk with him. I think he's got some really good ideas, and he's younger, which I think is great. So hopefully in January, maybe we can have him to the meeting so you guys can meet him. And I also need to talk to him about transitioning. We're kind of in the winter ball now. We won't have a ton of plans coming in until after the new year, but maybe we can talk with him about having him starting to do, in the interim, the plan reviews so he learns our ordinances. And then also, I want to talk to him about, I know a couple of you went to the training that PSAT's had last week. I'd like to continue doing more training for you in the new year so that's something that maybe he can help with as well because he's done that in his previous positions. So I'm encouraged. I think there's an opportunity there. The supervisors are still discussing. They'll have to take the final vote next week on if we want to give our intent to leave the local planning program January 1, 2025. The reason we're asking them to do that is simply because we don't want to end up paying for a service that we're not, they're not able to provide. The COG is going to hopefully be looking at language to change their articles of agreement for that situation. If they can no longer provide a program, then municipalities will be able to get out without the year notice or whatever, because right now they don't have any language that contemplates that. So there's a lot of things still in flex, but I think the planning program is in better shape than I thought it was in perhaps a month ago, so.
One thing about the intent of leaving, it's only an intent. They can back out of it, so.
Right, yeah. And State College Borough did this years ago a couple of times with the property maintenance program because they had very specific needs that they weren't, didn't feel were being met. And so they gave their intent, and then they rescinded it. And I suggested to the board that, why don't you give it until July? And then if it's not working for us, we still go forward. If it's great, then you withdraw your intent and we stay in. And then that's when the COG starts their budget process. So they would know what's going on and we wouldn't cause them chaos on their planning side.
And if they can't provide the services, that's a virtue contract.
Yes.
Okay, anything else for the good of the whole?
Or the partial?
Well, have a fantastic winter holiday season, and we'll look forward to seeing everyone in 2024. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
A second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.